It's seven o'clock. Hello, Longview. I'm Mayor Andy Mack. Thanks for joining me tonight as we hold our second virtual town hall meeting on Facebook and on City View Municipal Television. This is the second time we've done this. Last time, we had a great time. It was a big success. It was fun being with you all and discussing things. I know everybody's got a busy schedule, so I hope this format fits you and allows you to be able to talk to us and ask questions and gain information that makes you comfortable while sitting in your home or wherever you are, so we can have this virtual town hall meeting. I think it's a great idea, and I'm glad that we're doing it, and I'm glad you're here with me. Just like we did last year, I want to hear things that are going well. I want to know what you want to hear about, things that you're excited about. I want to hear your ideas about what we can do as a community to make Longview better, a better place to live, a better place to work, a better place to raise our families. So, let's talk about Longview tonight. We can certainly talk about particular problems, areas of concern, but I'd like to focus on solutions and ideas. That's what I always like to do. I'm a solution guy and an idea guy. So, let's set the ground rules. You can participate in this meeting in two ways. You can send me an email at mayor@longviewtexas.gov, or you can comment on the Facebook Live video. As the questions come in tonight, I'll try to answer as many of them as I can. I have a few people to help me facilitate tonight. I have Sean Hare and Julie Woods here with me, and I have Crystal. It's great having such a support team around me that makes this easier for me to do because I'm not technical. You all know that. Terry and Scott are in the back providing this video for us, so hopefully it all goes well, and if not, I had nothing to do with it. So, I'm going to ask everybody to be as neighborly and as civil as possible during the discussions. So, let's keep the focus and conversations on Longview, and let's get started. So, I have a few questions that have already been sent in, and I appreciate everybody that's already here watching us on whatever I'm watching, City View...
Facebook Live.
Facebook Live, whatever I'm watching. Thank you for being here. So, the first question I've had that's been sent in was, "It seems like crime is always a big issue for Longview. What is being done to address that?" Well, that's a great question, and I'm always happy to discuss crime. If you will, we can bring up our slide number one, because it shows right here that crime has declined more than 20% in the last three years. Police department is fully staffed, which makes a huge difference in being able to fight crime. If you don't have a fully-staffed police department, then they're trying to do a job that's hard to do without the resources necessary. So, with a fully-staffed police department, we've reduced our crime. Our police outreach service team is working directly with the homeless population. East Texas Safe Streets Initiative embedded two police officers as FBI agents and one police detective working directly with the U.S. Marshals Violent Crime Task Force. So, with all this going on, our crime has come down significantly. Let's talk about what we're always most concerned about, and that's our homicides, because we've come from a three-year average, last year, a three-year average of 12 per year. We were up to highs of 15 or 16 one year. Last year, we had seven, which is a great reduction. This year, we've only had three so far, which is another great reduction. But as I've said many times, one is too many. One means some innocent person lost their life, and our goal is zero. So, even though our crimes statistics are coming down, I won't be satisfied until they're at zero. And that may never happen, but we're going to shoot for that goal. That's my goal, because senseless crime, senseless loss of life, everyone suffers. But our crime has done very well. Our police officers are working hard. Our initiatives appear to be achieving their goals. So, great question, and we're working hard every day. Those police officers are out there, men and women are out there giving their time, giving their energy in their hearts to make Longview a better place, a safer place to live. Okay. Next question. What happened to the homeless task force? What are we doing to help the homeless? Okay, another great question. We'll bring up slide number four. Our homeless task force was set up through a group of people that gave a ton of time and energy to try to come up with solutions for our homeless population, to try to integrate our homeless individuals into society and make them productive, getting out of their current situation. We raised a ton of money at our first annual Go Give Regala. Over $200,000 was raised towards this homeless task force initiative, and that money is being used 100% strictly to develop this homeless task force here in Longview. So, that has been a huge success. Our police outreach team, they're working directly with the homeless population. Our two officers that are out there every day, and they're out there to help these individuals, to help the people in Longview, to help our businesses, and they're doing a phenomenal job. And I'm so proud of the tasks that they're doing and the job they're performing and the way they're going about it. They're educating our homeless population, giving them places they need to be, keep them out of trouble, keeping them out of jail. The worst place for a homeless person is to end up in jail. They have no resources to provide for themselves, so that's the worst place they can be in. It costs the taxpayers money. So, our police officers are doing a great job to prevent that, and I'm so proud for them and the way they're handling their situation, and they're helping our businesses. And people have said over and over, "We see a difference. This is working." And so, we're going to keep doing that. We have ordinances that have helped eliminate solicitation, the areas next to our businesses that have helped our businesses grow and helped our businesses become more productive. And I know the business people enjoy that, and they appreciate it. We've got a lot going on with the homeless task force, and I hope it continues to gain momentum and give these individuals chances to work if they want to with our job program, which has been very successful through the House of Disciples and Tim Weisman. If they want to work, we will put them to work. We'll provide meals. We'll provide transportation. We're doing a lot of things, and our homeless service fair that we did last year, or this year, I guess, was in March.
In March, yeah.
Phenomenal turnout. The things that we accomplished in that one day were phenomenal, and I appreciate city staff and all the volunteers that helped to put that together. But I appreciate people that came out to help our homeless population feel like they're part of our community, because they are part of our community. We're going to embrace that and make the best we can out of that situation for them every chance we can.
And one thing that was really impactful was how much of the community brought water.
Oh, my goodness, yeah.
Over the top, how much water it was brought.
Brought water, brought supplies.
A simple request.
People cut hair.
Yeah.
It was, we had the animal shelters out there.
Socks, deodorants.
Yeah.
Food, a lot of food.
Bags, food. People out there taking care of their pets, because you know, a lot of these homeless individuals have pets that need animal care and pet care. And our pet center did a great job. We had veterinarians out there, devoted their time, their energy. So, our community came together, and that's what we're all about. We're one community, one Longview, I've said a million times. So, great question. I'm glad that that did work out.
But hey, one thing I didn't hear you mention was about the work program.
The work program has really gone well. Tim Weisman, the House of Disciples, have made it where individuals that want to go out and have a job and earn a living and make money, we're going to provide that for them. And so, that program is going to continue to grow. I see nothing but good things coming from that, and I appreciate all those individuals that have put out their time, their energy to make that happen. So, it's a good thing, and I appreciate that, and I hope it continues. I know it will. So, good participation so far. Okay, let's see. Next question. Okay, here's one. What's the situation? The city finances the budget and using reserve funds? Okay, that's a really good question. We just had a discussion about that at our last council meeting where Keith Bonds presented our budget for the new year. The issue with using reserve funds is this. I think our reserve balance is up to 17%, where we have to maintain 10% in our fund. We have a slide on that.
Slide seven.
Slide seven, yeah. Okay, so, we ended our fiscal year with a 20% reserve fund. We're going to use some of that reserve fund and still have a 17% reserve fund after next year's budget cycle, which will still be $5.2 million above our 10% reserve. And I don't have a problem using that reserve fund when we have it available, because we've done a great job of budgeting, and the departments have been conservative, and we've been fiscally responsible, and so we have this reserve fund available. Rather than putting a tax on our citizens, why would we do that when we have that money available in the reserve fund that we can use and we still maintain more than an adequate reserve fund here at the City of Longview? So, that's just good business. I don't think we should collect more taxes than we need to collect when we have the money available, use that money, and so we don't put a burden on our taxpayers. So, our actual budget will be a good budget. It will be very conservative, because even though we've had a very nice surge in our sales tax revenues over the past number of months, we're going to still budget for a very conservative sales tax increase. And I think the economy is turning around. All the economic indicators are good. Our unemployment rate is way down, and so that all bodes well for our community. And as long as we can budget these conservative numbers, I think we end up being better at the city. So, I don't have any issues using that reserve fund for this, for these things we're using it for, because what we're using it for, a lot of them are one-time costs. We need to go ahead and fund some things that we are obligated to fund. So, we don't really have a choice on funding them. We have to fund them, so why not use the money that we have available and make that work for our citizens? Okay, next question. Let's see here. Why is the city looking at the possibility of a bond election? That's a very good question. Because we want to be a progressive city. And being a progressive city means you have to do things that make you better, that keep you in the forefront, keep you in the public eye of people looking to see our community. Now, this bond is a, it's a proposal from our CPAC Committee, our Comprehensive Plan Advisory Committee, and they came up with a grouping, three different groups of areas where they feel like looking at our comprehensive plan, which is a large document that is kind of a blueprint for the next 20 years of Longview, and how can we start implementing parts of that plan? We've implemented quite a few of them the last couple of years, but there's a few more that need to be implemented according to this committee. And so, the bond total is $104.2 million. Now, as a council, we haven't decided yet how that's going to be packaged out there, but I think we pretty much decided we will have a bond election in November and let you, the citizens, you that listened to this town hall meeting tonight, people in Longview, you all will decide if this bond passes or not, not our city council. We are not, we're here to facilitate what you direct us to do, and you'll direct us by your vote. And so, there'll be, there are three areas of this bond. There's public safety, there's pedestrian, and there's parks. And they may stand alone, and they may all go together. We'll determine that and see how we package this. But you know, if you break it down a little bit, the public safety facility, you know, to me, the public safety aspect of this bond, this isn't a wish or a want. This is a necessity. We need to provide for the public safety section of our city staff. We need a new building. We need a new fire station, a new training center. We need things that are necessary, not wants or wishes. So, to me, the public safety part of this bond is a, it's a no-brainer. We need to pass this, because it's something that our city desperately needs. And remember, ladies and gentlemen, the primary goal, the primary function of city government is to provide public safety. So, we need to make sure that our public servants and our public safety individuals have the abilities to do their job properly, and to do that, we need to upgrade their facilities. So, this is a facility upgrade. This isn't bells and whistles. This is just a necessary upgrade, where we've outgrown the area where they participate now, where they do their work, and so this is a, this is a need. When it comes to the parks and the infrastructure, these are more, these are more on the want side, but you know, that's what cities do. They want to be better. They want to be more progressive. So, you know, I hope to see these areas do well as well, but with any bond election comes a cost to that bond election. And if you look at what the totals on these costs would be, if we were to pass the complete bond package, hey, Ms. K. Driggers, I see you watching. Thank you. You're always there, and I appreciate you so much. If we were to pass the entire bond, it would be eight cents on $100,000 valuation. And what that means to the average person in Longview is this, for every, if you own a house that's worth $100,000 or property worth $100,000, it'll cost you $80 a year extra. And just back it down. If we pass seven cents, then it's $70 per $100,000 valuation. So, that would be a $95 million bond, all the way down to, say, a $55 million bond, which would be three cents, which is $30 on $100,000 valuation. So, no matter what, if we pass any part or the entire bond, there will be a tax increase associated with that, and the public needs to be aware of that and understand that, because nothing in life is free, but you get what you pay for. And so, you know, to upgrade our facilities, to upgrade our parks, to upgrade our streets and whatnot, it will cost us money, and it'll be up to you, the voters, to decide if you're willing to pay for that or you're not willing to pay for it. And if you do, we'll implement every ounce of it. If you decide not to, we will go on as business as usual, taking care of the city as we have with the funds we have available. We just don't have funds available to spend $104 million out of our city budget for these types of referendums. If we did have that, you should say shame on y'all, because that means we overtaxed you all, and we have $104 million sitting in the bank, and that's not what cities should do. So, cities don't operate like that. We borrow money to do projects such as this. We don't tax our citizens and hope we might use that money someday. That's not the way, that's not the way my budget's ever going to run. That's not the way I think you want your taxes being utilized either. So, you all will decide. You will vote, and if you vote yes, then we will proceed, and we will have things that you want. If you vote no, then we will not, and we will continue on. But I think it's important that we do talk about it, and you do understand the ramifications of this bond, because, and remember this, there are aspects that need to be discussed. If you're 65 or older, your taxes are frozen, so even if we pass this bond, you will never see a tax increase if you're 65 or over. So, you kind of get it for free, which is that you've paid your dues, and you deserve that. So, I have no issues with that. I think that's very good, and I hope that you will get out and support or vote your conscience. But as I said in the council meeting, we'll have a lot of discussion on this. Hey, Ken Carter, thanks for always being here as well, buddy. You're always, always on top of things. As I said in the council meeting, we will discuss this. We'll have a lot of discussion, but we're going to be civil about it. We're going to be neighborly. We're going to, we're going to discuss it and accept that people will have different opinions than what we might have, but every opinion is coming from someone that has a concern, and so I'm going to listen to every opinion there is. I'll have my own opinion, but you know what? I only get one vote, just like you get. I don't have a say-so in the council. We get one vote, and I will vote, and I'll vote my conscience on what I want, because it will, I'm not 65 yet, so it will cost me whatever we vote for. That's what it'll cost. But every individual will see that differently, because everyone's in different stations in life. So, you'll have to evaluate that and say, "Is it worth it to me?", and if it is, then you'll vote your conscience. If it's not, if that doesn't work for you, then I get that as well. So, we'll look at it from all angles, but we'll do it civilly. We'll do it neighborly, and we'll all appreciate the other side that we don't see, because I gain so much when I see different viewpoints, because we get to be tunnel vision at times, and all you see is your viewpoint, but when you look at it from someone else's viewpoint, you can see a clearer picture sometimes. So, I hope that we'll all do that, and we'll all evaluate this and see what's going on. So, I look forward to the discussion. I think there will be a lot of discussion about it, and I think there should be, but I also think that we need to look and see just exactly what it means to the future of our community, because the future of our community will sit right here in this bond election. So, hopefully, we will see that and use those, that information that we have.
I think it's worth noting that you've got a discussion item on the next council meeting, which is August the ninth.
August ninth.
And then, you're not actually calling the election at that point. It's still, you know, it's still open to be determined what gets put on there, so we probably have a special meeting just to actually call the election.
Correct, because we have to the 20th of August to call the election. But August the ninth, if you have discussion that you want to discuss openly in public, you can come and fill out a speaker card, and we'll listen to you for three minutes. If you'd rather do that privately with your council representative, please contact your council reps, because they, they want to hear from you. We want to know what you're thinking. We want to know what Longview wants. That's our job, to facilitate your wishes. You've elected us to do that, and that's, we're going to listen. We're going to bring that forward as you, as you so desire. So, please come if you want to the meeting on the ninth, or contact your rep, your council representative, or contact me, and we'll be glad to discuss it with you and see what you, what you think about this. So, hey, Matthew Prosser, thanks for being here tonight, buddy.
We've got a couple of questions. We've got a lot of questions coming in, actually.
Yeah.
Which is good. A couple of them have to deal with development. It seems like no matter, no matter what you do, there's always questions about, hey, what's going in here? What's going in there? So, this is a question about the Loop 281 and Eastman Road. So, everybody's been seeing all that dirt moving out there, so they're saying, "What's going in there? What's being planned? Is it all retail?"
Well, my understanding is, and I'm not the developer that by any stretch, but I've spoken to the developer, and my understanding is it's going to be a mixed-use area with retail, with office space, and even some, possibly some type of housing in their apartment complex or something. But whatever it is, I know it's going to be very nice and very well-done, because another developer is doing it, and that will be a huge addition to Longview. That's a, it's a great corner. There's been nothing but trees in the past, and I think the way they're developing it, it will be a very nice area for the community, and I think it will add, it will add a lot of value to our community. It'll add tax dollars. It'll add jobs. It'll add income, so I think it's going to be nice. I don't think it's all retail, though. I think there's, I know there's potential for office space for, and for some housing, I think, so.
Yeah, I think that one's not completely set in stone, like you said.
Correct.
But I think it's a good reminder that, you know, you don't, the city doesn't direct the development, what goes in there.
Exactly. We approve an area to be developed, but the developer gets to decide what he brings in there, as long as it fits within the plan that we've approved. But you know, he can, he can do, he could make it anything he really wanted to, as long as it fits into what he's, we've approved from the city, but we don't get to choose who goes in there or what goes in there. That's up to the developer, who's spending his hard-earned money and taking the risk of developing that property.
So, that leads into the next question that came from someone saying, "Hi, can Mayor Mack please discuss some of the blight and empty businesses in Longview and what the plan is?"
Sure, and that's from Escala Almaz.
That's her, yeah.
Yeah, and that last one was from Richard Pearson, wasn't it?
Right.
Yeah, thanks, Richard. I appreciate when you always comment, buddy. I appreciate your Facebook as well. Okay, the blighted, empty businesses, okay, once again, we don't get to control who comes and goes, and we don't get to control who decides to close the business. We hope that all businesses will succeed and thrive in Longview, but those that don't, they, they have the book to shut down. What we do control is that those buildings have to meet certain standards, and when they don't meet certain standards, then we intervene, and we can facilitate change in that. But two great examples of this are downtown, where the petroleum building, which was in poor repair, disrepair, has been planned or scheduled to be converted to apartment living, multifamily apartment living, which is a wonderful use of that building, and it will bring a lot of, a lot of excitement to downtown. Also, the Weaver Building has been planned for some more living facilities, which, you know, here's the way I look at that. When you bring people to downtown that are going to live in downtown, that means downtown's going to have to provide for their needs, which means we're going to need some retail. We're going to need some restaurants. We're going to need some businesses downtown to provide for the needs of those people living there, which starts that snowball rolling to make downtown continue to be growing and viable. And so, those buildings are going to be put to really good use if this turns out, which we think it will, which will be fantastic. And there are other buildings in town that are vacant, that we don't control. The Kmart Building, it's a huge building on McCann Road that's been vacant for at least a year now, and I wish something would go in there, but we don't, as a city, get to control who goes there or what their asking price is. And you know, so someone can come and buy that and renovate it and make it something, but we don't get to, we don't get to decide that. So, you know, the blighted buildings, we wish there were zero, but those that become a nuisance, we can then do something about that. Otherwise, if someone keeps their building up to standards and codes, it can stay vacant as long as they want it to, because it's their building. It's not public property.
I would only add to that, you know, the city does put money into the budget for demolition.
Absolutely.
But it only goes so far. Like you said, so much of it is dependent on that property owner maintaining their property.
Right, and we give them every opportunity we can for them to maintain their property, because it's better for them to maintain it than for us to have to go and demolish it, because demolishing it is expensive for the city. But we have a budget for that, to do that, and we do it every year. So, that's part of our ongoing budget. When it gets to the point where they won't, they won't take care of their responsibilities, then we step in and we do what we have to do.
Andy, one thing you might piggyback on is when people say, "Why are these buildings empty, and why are people building new instead of moving into these empty buildings?" I hear that all the time.
Well, I do too, and here's, here's a classic example. The people that own those buildings sometimes don't want to sell them at a reasonable price, or at least what a buyer considers a reasonable price, because when someone buys an old, empty building, they have to then renovate that building. They may have to even do some abatement to that building if there's asbestos or whatever in it, and that's expensive. And so, sometimes it's cheaper to build new than it is to renovate old, depending on what the cost of the building and the land is for the building in sitting. So, I know that was the case with the Kmart Building for a while. The asking price in that building was so extremely high, and the abatement necessary to do something with that building would even be higher, and therefore, it wasn't cost-effective, and so it's sat vacant for quite some time. But we don't get, once again, we don't control the asking price or the sales price, so sometimes it is just easier to build new. But we would love to see retrofitting or backfilling in every building that was vacant into something new and bring those buildings up to speed and make them look nice again. I saw, I saw something from Matthew, didn't Matthew Prosser have a question?
Yeah, Matthew Prosser was issuing good words to slow down. School's about to start. Be careful, be aware, be more patient.
Hey, Matthew, thank you for reminding me of that, because school is about to start. In the next couple, three weeks, all the schools will be back in session. You know, we get, we get kind of lax when it comes to summertime. I know I do, because I go through quite a few school zones to and from, work and hospital and school and home and whatnot. And when summertime's there, I know those flashing lights aren't there, but be reminiscent that in two or three weeks, those lights will be back up again. Take your time, go through the school zones. Don't text and drive. Follow the law, follow the rules, and let's keep our kids safe, because that's very, very important.
Randy Hubstamler had a question, going back to the bond, just asking, "Is it going to be a line-item bond election or a total package, and what will be the cost of the property owners?" I think you answered some of those, but maybe not the line.
Hey, Randy, thanks for the question. Yeah, we haven't decided that, Randy. We're going to, we're going to discuss that as a council to see how we feel we'd be best to present that to the, to the public. But the cost, once again, is all based on how many, how big the package is. As I said, if it's a total of $104 million, that's eight cents tax increase, which is $80 for $100,000 valuation, and back on down the line, seven cents, six cents, five cents, four cents. The least it would be would be three cents if we did any one of the things is three cents. So, that would be $30 per $100,000 valuation would be the very least of all of them.
So, one thing that's a recurring comment that someone's making on here is regarding debt versus opportunity. You know, if taking on a bond, you know, taking on debt will provide for a good future for Longview, or will it not? Do you want to address any of that?
Well, I mean, that's for the citizens to decide. Debt is, you know, I don't know many cities that don't have debt. I mean, debt is part of progress.
Or any businesses.
Businesses as well. Sometimes you have to, you have to be in debt in order to progress if you have the ability to pay that debt off. That's what you have to decide. Can I afford the debt, or is a debt going to be something I cannot afford? And most businesses and cities issue bonds for large projects such as this. I mean, do you think the City of Arlington is paying for the new Texas Rangers Baseball Stadium out of their budget? Because they're not. They're issuing debt for that. they're not. They're issuing debt for that. I mean, everybody has to issue debt if you want to have large projects such as this. And we're talking about things, you know, $100 million is a lot of money to me. That's a, that's a huge number. You know, the school systems issue debt when they do bond packages. That's just part of, that's just part of it. So, but that's for the citizens to decide if they want to pay for that debt. Because we have the ability to do it, it's called taxation. If you don't want to increase your taxes and live the way we are with our tax rate, the way it is, then you vote no for this. And if you do think it's a good idea, then you get to vote yes. So, but...
This would probably be a great time to encourage people to vote.
One way or the other because...
Just vote.
If you don't vote, then you've lost your ability to have a say. So what, you're either going to pay or not pay. So, you know, that's up to the citizens. But to say we're not going to call a bond election, I think that would be cheating the citizens out of the ability to decipher themselves. Because that shouldn't be our decision. That should be the citizen's decision and who, and when they vote, they vote. But debt is, debt, I mean, for most cities, debt is part of, of doing business. I don't know, maybe there are cities that run and can do projects without issuing debt. I don't know how they can. They must have a monstrous tax base or have a huge reserve. And if they have a huge reserve, then I think they're taxing their citizens too much. So...
Yeah. So Jeremiah Hunter, he mentions there are, there are two communities somewhat nearby. So City of Tyler, they, their tax rate and how they handle their capital projects is very different. And so they, they don't have debt, but they utilize their, essentially how we do our economic development, those funds they put straight into.
Quarter of our sales tax, quarter cent of our sales tax and put to economic development, which is 5.7 something million dollars a year.
Right.
Tyler does not do that. They, they spend that on some of their projects. But then they don't have economic development funds that we have. So it's, you can rob Peter to pay Paul. But I can tell you this, Tyler just had to increase their tax rate and their service rates because they're, they were out of money. So that's the same as debt. You know, that, when you have to raise your taxes, you have, because you don't have enough money to pay for your services. And we didn't have to do that. Hadn't done that in a number of years since our last bond election in 2011, I believe it was, when that was voted on.
Correct.
So, you know, you can, you can skin that cat however you want to, but we dedicate a quarter cent of our sales tax to LeadCo, another quarter cent to our drainage fund. So, you know, that's $10 million a year that we're using for projects in Longview that we're funding through our taxes versus putting it into, say, our streets and roads, but not having the ability to have economic development. And I can guarantee you, some of that money that we're doing in economic development is very well spent. I mean, i.e. Dollar General's building a million-square-foot building out on, on our business park where they're going to bring in 450 jobs and who knows what that will do for our economy and the ripple effect that will have. So, you know, you can say you're debt-free, but when you have to raise your taxes, well, you're not really debt-free. So...
Right. The city of Longview certainly does cash fund some projects.
Sure we do.
It's not to say we only...
We have CIP budget that we, that we cash fund projects. But when we have projects like this, like Maude Cobb, like Lear Park, we, we sell bonds to fund those because those aren't things that we have in our, in our budget. So we want to do a project like this to do, you know, $104 million worth of projects, we have to issue debt if we want to do that. If we don't, we don't issue the debt.
Right.
My understanding also is that we have several different buildings or facilities in the city of Longview where we're leasing space because we've run out of space.
We do. We lease a lot of space for HR and for other departments in town that we pay pretty hefty rent. And so those departments back into our facility saves us a ton of money in debt and in rent every year. And so that 1.9, I think it was 1.9 million to renovate the old police station, to bring the other HR and stuff back in there, will pay for itself, pay itself off in less than 10 years based on what we're paying for our lease space. So that's good business. Now, that's just a good business move is all that is.
Right.
So one question that's come up since we're still on the bond topic is, are there going to be any public forums for people to discuss this or to be able to give input in addition to city council meetings?
The city council meeting will be August the 9th. And then if, if any council person wants to have a public forum, that's certain up to any council person. And you're welcome to call and contact any of us at any point in time. You don't have to have a public forum to state your opinion. You can call us anytime you want to. We'll listen to you all day long because that's what we're, that's what we're elected to do. So sometimes public forums intimidate people and they don't want to speak out in public, which I get that. I don't, I didn't used to like it either. Not that I really like it now, but it's part of the job. So if you want to contact us, feel free. This is what it's for. This is an open discussion where nothing has been decided. All we've decided is that we're going to let the citizens decide. That's all we've decided. So you all get to decide, talk to us, contact your reps, contact me, and we'll take any information that you have and we'll listen. We, we don't, I don't, ladies and gentlemen, if you all think I have all the answers, I certainly do not. I do not have all the answers. But I can certainly listen and gain information and hopefully give you some answers or at least give you some direction on what you're asking. So...
I think this is a great question. I think you're going to like it too. Jason Coward is asking, "What can local churches do outside of a spiritual capacity to help in the initiatives your administration has put forth?"
I love that. I mean, our local churches are such a, can be such a powerful force in our community. If you look at, we have 100 churches in Longview and every church has individuals willing to help and give and sacrifice and love. And that's what, man, that's, to me, that's what it's all about. I think, I know every one of the nonprofits would welcome any help that any church would want to give to help facilitate what they're doing. I know my Sunday School class at First Baptist Church, we serve at Highway 80 once a month. We go up there and we cook the food and we serve to the residents there. And I know they appreciate the heck out of that. And I know they get a hot meal, but I get more out of that than they'll ever get out of it. And so I think all the, everyone that wants to participate, there's ways to participate with our nonprofits and with our, when they're homeless initiatives. You can contact Laura Hill at our city. You want something to do, Laura Hill will put you to work. So if you think you need something to do, you contact Laura Hill and I guarantee you she'll have you a list of things that you can do to help to facilitate what you, what, what, what objects of the church are, that's to help those that need the help. So not, not, not hard to do. And I really appreciate that question because that goes to the heart of our community. You know, our churches are the heart of our community and, you know, the people willing to help, that's where, that's where the love is spread. So thank you very much for that question.
Hmm.
Next question.
Next question. All right. So there's a question actually from, from Kay Driggers about, "Why do we still need to spend a quarter cent drainage tax since all projects are completed?"
Well, Ms. Kay, I wish they were all completed, but unfortunately in Longview, we have a thing called Grace Creek and that little baby never seems to leave us alone. And so there are, there are still drainage projects we have to complete every year. I think they're definitely coming down. I think our numbers are coming down and we've been able to use some of that drainage fund money to, to do other projects in the community, not just drainage projects, but associated projects. But I do think that number has come way down because we had a drainage initiative a few years ago that took care of a lot of the problems. But unfortunately, there's always something to do with Grace Creek. And so we have to maintain some level of drainage fund to take care of problems when they do arise. You know, we get those floods every now and then that we wish we didn't, but we do. And so, you know, I don't think we'll ever not have drainage projects to do. I think there'll always be some there, but they have definitely decreased over the years. And so we're able to utilize that money for other projects in the community, which, which really helps.
And it's also utilized for general maintenance of the drainage. So it's also all of the staff that go into cleaning out the, all of those drainage areas and just keeping it maintained, replacing culverts, doing all of those kinds of things. So it's not just projects.
Because over time, all those things need to be reworked and replaced and redone.
Right.
What's, what's our next one?
We've got a pause at the moment.
Well, Matthew Prosser is asking another question.
Okay, what's up, Matthew?
NP. He said, "Excited with some of the recent happenings on Highway 80. Could you speak to the progress being made from the city code enforcement side with regard to the rundown motels and properties along that corridor?"
Yes, sir, Matthew. We have, we have made some, some big strides. You know, with, with the sale of the American Dream Inn, which is one of the blighted hotels on Highway 80, we're starting to see a progression of trying to clean that up. And I've asked city staff to really help with this and I think we're moving forward. There are some areas on Highway 80 that need attention. And we're hoping that the owners of those properties will provide that attention that's necessary and clean those, those places up. But if they don't, then we will have to step in and do what we have to do as a city to keep us safe. I look at that in really three phases. We have, we have three phases of Highway 80. We have from Easton Road to 4th Street. Then we have 4th Street to McCann Road. We have McCann Road in and out to our city limits. And those are kind of the three phases of, of Highway 80. And I want to see us progressing on those phases to work to make it better for everybody. And I understand there are, there are, there are individuals that utilize those motels as a, as a, as a place of residence. And, and I get that. But the majority of what we get from those motels are crime calls and nuisance calls and drug calls and prostitution calls and things that are not productive for our city and they're not good for our city. And so we're spending a lot of time and resources addressing those. And so we're trying to eliminate that. Now, we're not trying to eliminate someone's home, don't get me wrong. But we, we will hope that they will find a better place than a rundown motel that's not fit to live in. And so our goal is to make it better, not put anyone out on the streets, to help people and to reduce our crime and the opportunity for crime to grow and fester in those, in those places. So yes, we, we definitely are working on that. And I think it's something that we're going to see a lot of progress. And I like that. So I appreciate that comment, Matthew.
So here's one that's just come in. I understand that someone has, the question is, I understand that, that someone has offered to give the city Lake Le Mans for a park, and I don't understand why the city won't take that.
Well, okay, the city has certainly been in discussion with the family about Lake Le Mans. And Lake Le Mans is a lake that's been in, you know, here forever. And so, forever, however long it's been here. But we would, we, we would certainly welcome a donation from the Lake Le Mans family. But the donation can't have restrictions that bind us to monies that we don't have. And so some of the restrictions associated with the Lake Le Mans offering would cost the city money we don't have right now. As far as having to buy some areas around the lake in order to have access, in order, there are stipulations on how quickly it has to be developed, which we don't have the money to develop a lake like that, a property like that. It would cost us millions of dollars to develop it right now. But if, if they want to just give us the lake with no restrictions and no strings attached, we would gladly accept that. But we can't accept a donation that puts a city in a negative financial position based on restrictions sent by the donor. So, you know, we'll continue discussions and hopefully that would work out because it would be a nice addition to our community. But it can't be addition that costs us money that we don't have. And so we have to be very careful with that. And, and the city does not buy, we don't make the habit of buying parkland. You know, mostly our parkland gets donated to us and which we appreciate that. And so hopefully we'll be able to work something out and make that come to fruition. But it has to be on the city's terms that we can afford. And it was a very, it's a very generous offer by a family who's a wonderful family, lifelong family in Longview, and we appreciate them. And we'll continue discussions with them. But everyone has to understand that the, the financial constraints that we have to work under.
Right. Yeah, it's, it is a really neat property. It would be a great development project, redevelopment of that area. But like you said, you've got to, got to make it work for all the way around.
Well, and it kind of goes into the whole reason why the city is putting forth a bond election to let, to allow the citizens to decide what they want.
Right.
It's not really your job to decide.
You know, just, just take the parks part of the bond package, you know? Part of that's to complete Lear Park. Well, I mean, you know, Lear Park is a big moneymaker for Longview, not in just direct revenue, but in, in revenues throughout the city as, as people come and stay and stay in our hotels, which increases our hotel occupancy tax. It gives us more ability to fund our performing arts and the things that we use the hotel occupancy tax for. People come and they spend a lot of money here. So Lear Park is a moneymaker for Longview. So to, I would love to just say, "Let's just complete Lear Park." But that's just not the way, it's not the way it works. The city has to decide, "Yeah, we want to complete Lear Park." If they want to spend the money to do that, that's how it works. You'll vote, you'll, you'll decide if you want to do it. But there's a lot of options there. But I think the citizens have to decide that.
So somebody, Jed Smith, sent in a question about, "Are drainage tax funds allowed to be used for the parks, namely Lear Park? Since spring seasons for soccer are diminished due to poor drainage, with the season being diminished, the funds raised from the concession stands, et cetera, are reduced," and I believe were pointed out in earlier council meeting. The reason given for the reduced funds being raised was inability to use the soccer portions of the fields. And I'm thinking he may be referring to what, what was mentioned in there was a desire to actually do some turf fields out there. I don't know, we'd have to, we can follow up for sure with the, with the parks folks about that. I think they were looking at that not from a drainage issue, but more from a, a usage of the grass.
Right. Right now, the, those fields are turf. I mean, they're, they're grass.
They're grass, right.
And when they get, we've had incredibly wet spring, you know, and, and winter where the soccer fields were almost used less than they were used because you can't tear that grass up. Because if you do, it's a huge expense to maintain and replace. And part of that Lear Park bond package is to replace those soccer fields with turf. So you can use them here around regardless of the, of the weather or, you know, the, the condition of the grass. There'll be no grass anymore. And also lights out there for the soccer fields to use them at nighttime because that's, that's an issue. Those are all things that, okay, that's just an example of making Lear Park a better place to go and to play and a better thing for Longview. But it costs money. So if you think that's something that you want to see happen in Longview, then you should vote for that part of it. Because that would be something that would benefit the community and what you'd like to do in the soccer fields. Because it's not really a drainage issue, it's just a saturation of the grass because we had so much rain. And unfortunately, you can't, if you, if you play on those, that grass, and obviously if we had underground drainage, you know, like the professional fields do, that would drain off much quicker. But we don't have that there. And so, you know, it's, it's just one of those things, when the grass gets wet, we just can't ruin the grass because then we, it costs us more money to maintain it and replace it than it does to not use it. So that's just taking care of the parks that we have. So...
Right.
But, but can the drainage funds be used for the parks? I think drainage fund can be used for anything that has to do with drainage. So...
And they can actually be used even wider than that.
Yes.
Like it, it's property tax relief funds is what it is. And it's always been more earmarked towards drainage because we had such huge drainage issues to address. So that's always been what that...
Sure.
Has, the intent has been...
Great question, Jed. And I appreciate the, allowing me to, you know, kind of clarify why we couldn't play on those fields. But once again, those soccer fields were addressed very heavily in, in the Lear Park completion. Oh, wait, wait, wait. Go back to that, John. Hold on. Go back, go back. Hold on. Hey, Jason John Coward, has anyone told you you're doing a great job, Lady Dr. Mack? You are. No, they haven't. Thank you very much. I appreciate you so much for sending that in. You get a gold star from me. Let's see, where, where's our next one coming from? We're getting close.
There was someone asking about the potential widening of...
Of 4th Street.
4th Street. Yeah.
Okay, that, that was brought up at our last council meeting. Because the issue is the turn, there's no turn lane in that stretch between the Loop and Hawkins, where we have Lowe's and Walmart and all those, those businesses there. And unfortunately, I think the cost estimate for that was 1.2 something million dollars to, to do that. And, and there's no right of way, there's no easement. I'm not sure there's even room to do it. But the cost, that's, that's a pretty big number for a very short distance on that, on that street. So I don't think that's been put on the agenda to, to do because of the, the cost of that. It would be nice, you know, and, and it's, it's so unfortunate that you can't look at a city 20 years ago and plan for 20 years ahead for growth and you just can't do it. But that's, you know, if you, if you could have, we would have planned a lot differently in, in all that. But there's no way to, to gauge how we have grown and Longview has grown, both in, in economics and in retail and in our hotels and our restaurants. We've grown a lot. And so certain thoroughfares that weren't so widely used are now widely used. And so we, we do have issues, but I don't think we're going to be spending a million-two to put a turn lane in there anytime soon. Simply because I don't think there's room to do it, number one, without really creating some issues with both sides of the street with the property owners. And I think it'd be, it'd be an issue. But I do, I do wish it was there. I mean, it would be nice if every road in town was a five-liner like Justin Road. You know, that would be the greatest thing in the world, but it just isn't.
The, our traffic engineer, when they did that study back then, it was funny when they said it. So they, they looked at, "Could you do it within the existing lanes without having to get the additional space?" And he came back to the Director of Public Works, Roland McVie, and said, "Yes, we can do that." He said, "It'll be nine-foot lanes." And he said, "Will, will that fit?" He said, "Yeah, everyone just has to pull their mirrors in."
Well, I wish we had the room to do it because it would be a, a great addition. And now there, someone else has even talked about putting a stoplight up there, which I don't think that's feasible due to the distance between the stoplight, between 4th Street and the one at Hawkins. So I just don't think that's, that's a solution. And, and we'll continue to look at that. And it's always great when, when our citizens do have concerns and they bring those to us because we don't always know what the concerns are because we're not in every part of town like everyone, you know, like individuals are. So it's wonderful when you bring us issues and we can try to solve them. We don't always have a solution, but we're certainly going to try. We'll give it our best shot. But not every problem is going to have a solution that we can afford at this point in time.
So someone had a question specifically about water lines and extending water lines. They say they live outside the city limits on the east end of Loop 281. A neighbor heard there was a discussion of extending the city line out our way. Any truth to that? I'm thinking they might be thinking about the, the little bit of annexation that just took place.
Yeah, we did a little bit of annexation on the Loop for some, a business that's going to come in. But we don't really have any plans to annex much past that. There, there are constraints with annexation that, that are cost-related. Basically, when you annex a piece of property, you're extending city services to that piece of property. And you have to, you have to weigh how much it costs you to bring water and sewer to an area versus how much revenue you'll receive from that area to see if it's cost-effective. And a lot of places... lot of places, the density is just not there to be cost effective. And when we get, when we get north on 259, we run into Tron Water, and then there we have a big roadblock. We have, we have not been able to really bridge that gap outside of that area. So, because they have a different, they have a different water supplier and a different municipality, a different entity that, that they go through for water. And we, you know, we just have to leave that where it is, at least for now. So there's not a lot of plans to annex in that direction at this point in time.
Well, and that, that question actually came from your children's former babysitter.
No, Kendra.
Kendra.
Hey Kendra, how are you?
And I know where Kendra lives. She's actually just north of I-20 on that eastern end of 281.
Oh, yeah.
Is where she's at. So.
And, and now out there Kendra, there, there is the ability, there is more of an ability to annex that direction than there is to annex north. North, we just had a roadblock with Tron Water. For, for legitimate reasons. I'm not, I'm not dissing Tron Water. But to the east out there near the Loop, near, near I-20 on the south side, there is ability to annex. It just has to be cost effective for the city to do that. And, and, and that would be something that would have to be initiated by the property owners. We wouldn't just go annex property just to say we're annexing property. A lot of times we get, we get requests for annexation, which we've had on, we had that on George Ritchie Road. We had it out on the Loop. And we, we assess that and we see if it's cost effective. And if so, then city has no problems annexing property when people want to be annexed. But sometimes people don't want to be annexed. So we're not going to force an annexation if we don't see a reason to do that. Thanks Kendra.
Somebody named Emery Walker was asking, is the city going to be replacing the old water lines and fire hydrants? I live on a street, the fire hydrant is in bad shape.
Well, that, I, I don't know that we're replacing any, but I can tell you this, Emery, if you have a fire hydrant that's in bad shape, please contact us. Get on your City Send app or send it to the city and we will certainly look into that because we don't want ever to be a defective fire hydrant. Those are so vitally important. If there was ever a fire, God forbid there wouldn't be, but if there ever was, that has to be functional and, and maintainable at all times. So if there's an issue, we will certainly look into that at any point in time. That's a public safety issue that we take very seriously. If there's an issue, please contact us. We'll, we will handle that. But we don't just routinely replace them with, for no reason. I know there's some cities that have really neat looking fire hydrants, but you know, we, we have to deal with what we have. We don't, we're not going to be replacing the fire hydrants unless there's a need. But if there's a need, we'll certainly address it. Thank you for your concern.
There's another question from Ms. Driggers. I know you wouldn't want to ignore her. She's asking, with the exception of the 100-year flooding, which property owners have insurance for, what else do we need to do to complete Grace Creek?
Ms. Driggers, I, I can't answer that question. I don't think you can complete Grace Creek. You know, it continues to, to carry a, a large volume of water during, during certain times, during certain floods. And, and, you know, that, that creek gets out of its banks at, at certain locations, no matter what we do. So I don't think there's any plans to, to widen or dredge it anymore that we already have. We spent a lot of money already doing that in areas where we felt the need. But sometimes mother nature is just going to win. And when she wins, she wins. And we have to just deal with the consequences. So, you know, but over the last number of years, she has not been as cruel to us as she has been in the past because of the money that we've spent to make it a more feasible creek for our community. So there are still some areas that, that where it gets out of the banks. But you know, that's that 100-year flood. That's that thing that we don't, we don't see very often. And when we do though, for those involved, it's not, it's unfortunate. But I don't think there's any plans to do anything else to Grace Creek at this point other than, other than doing things on an as needed basis. And I could be wrong on that, Ms. Driggers. And if I am, I'll get with you and let you know. I'll talk to city engineers and see if there's something else that we're doing. But if so, I'll let you know that. Okay, thank you for the question.
Any more talk of a water park coming?
Golly, I want a water park here so bad. Yes, there is still talk about a water park. You know, we had, we had actually three, three water park, I guess you call them vendors, show interest in the city. And I'm not, I'm not saying they're not going to do it, but we haven't, we haven't had anybody sign on the dotted line yet. A water park would be such a great thing in Longview. I think we sit in such a perfect location for that, you know, between Shreveport, between Canton. I think whoever does it in our area, you know, our neighbors or around us, first one in is going to win that, that battle. And I would love to see us do that. And once again, I wish we could snap our fingers and, and make someone do it. But they have to evaluate it and see if it's feasible, if they think they make money. But I think they could. I think it would be a home run with our area. And I think there's great location to do it. We actually have, had a group that was looking at two or three different locations. So I hope they'll continue that and I hope they'll see Longview as a growing entity. But that's all part of progression. That's what I'm saying. That's, that's where we go back to the bond issue. You know, the bond issue makes us a progressive city in some form or fashion if, if we, if we do things like that. And I think industry or businesses looking at Longview want to see, am I going to put my money in a progressive city? Or am I going to put my money in a city that's sitting there, standing still, not doing much? You know, that's just, that's just a business decision they have to make. But I, I hope we'll be as attractive as we can be as a city for anyone looking to put a business in anywhere in East Texas. I want to be that place that everybody wants to come. Do y'all realize there are 1,000 people a day moving to the state of Texas? 1,000 people every day, most of them coming from California. And where are they all going? They're going really to the big metroplexes right now. You know, Austin, Houston, San Antonio, Dallas, Fort Worth, the big metroplexes. But you know what adventure is going to happen? You know, they got plenty of land. You know what's going to happen in those metroplexes? They're going to run out of water. Sooner or later, they're going to run out of a finite resource. Guess what? We got all the water we need. So hopefully some of those people will start looking at Longview and saying, hey, East Texas is a great place to be. Let's trickle over there and get rid of that hustle bustle of big cities. But we've got to be attractive. We've got to say, we've got to say, come look at us and look what we have to show you. I hope that's what we're doing. I hope we're being a progressive city that looks good to people looking to move here from business or industry standpoint. So water park, bring it on. We'd love to have you.
Question from Chris Williams. Is there still talk about widening George Ritchie between Gilmer Road and White Oak?
Yes, absolutely. That's, that's on the agenda to do. It's, it's a discussion item. It's, but, but that's a, that's another one that really is going to be a big issue. Tech dot has already issued a study or a survey or whatever you call it. But, you know, acquiring that right of way, that's going to be an expensive thing. And, you know, when, just because Tech dot wants to do a project and they pay a ton of money for that, which they've already agreed to pay some of that money, they don't, the city has to participate to a certain level in, in approaching that, that right of way and the cost. And that's a big number. It's going to be a big number for our city to, to do that. So yes, the talk is there and Tech dot has studied it and they're, they're looking at it very seriously. But right of way acquisition will be, it will be expensive. So, but yeah, the answer to that question is yes. That's certainly a possibility.
This may be the most asked question that you ever ask. Why does Longview Cable have a monopoly on internet services and why suddenly not here?
Okay, I get asked this question all the time. And understand something. We no longer have franchise agreements with these cable companies. We don't have any say so who comes and doesn't come. That is not regulated by the city any longer. That's state regulated. Is that correct, Sean?
Right.
And, and anybody that wants to can come here. It's just the fact that, that Longview Cable already has their lines laid and they can operate here, but anyone else can come here. Suddenlink, AT&amp;T, you name it, Century, I don't care who they are. You can come here, but they have to lay their lines. And that's expensive to them. But if they saw a, a profitable way to do it, if there was enough interest, then, I mean, that's how businesses make decisions. They have to look at and say, okay, it's going to cost me X, X number of millions of dollars to lay my lines. Can I get enough customers to pay my fee to do that? And so, you know, that's, that's free market enterprise. We, the city of Longview does not control that at all.
And we haven't had a hand in it in decades.
No.
So just so we're clear, any company can come here and.
Any company. If you know someone from AT&amp;T or from CenturyLink or from Suddenlink or wherever you want to call them, tell them to come look at Longview. That's, that's all free market enterprise.
Or if they've just got a couple of extra $100 million laying around.
It could be a business.
Come do it. That's right.
It is, it could be. And you know, competition is great. Competition is what is great for the consumer. So if we can have competition here on that, it'd be great for our consumers. So yes, I get asked that question all the time.
Every day.
And everyone thinks that the city controls that and we do not because it says Longview Cable. But it is not. We do not control that at all. But a great question. I'm glad we got to clear that up. Okay, here's one about, about our trails and our handicap access. Hey, I'm glad, I'm glad we're asking this question. Here's something that you, you should know. Our trail system is progressing. You know, we, we have, we have approved funds for our trails to be a contiguous 10 miles of trails connecting all of the trails we have all the way down to the Boerman Trail. And, and that's going to be a huge valuable asset for our community. Lead Co. has been instrumental in, in helping to fund that. We've gotten some grants from the state, which have been very instrumental in helping us fund this. And it's coming. And it's nice to see that because our trails are going to be a great asset to our community. And when that happens, we're going to have so much fun to be able to go back and forth all the way, 10 solid miles. And I look to see businesses develop along those trails. I look to see people really, really utilizing that asset. And, and those trails will be handicap accessible all the way through.
It's time.
Hmm? Oh my gosh, we're already at 8 o'clock. Okay. Here, here's the thing. This has been so much fun. And there are so many more questions here. We will, we will keep these questions. We will get answers for every one of you all. We will get back to you on the questions. And I just want to say, thank you so much for participating. This has been a lot of fun. It's great when we can communicate in a civilized fashion. We can hear and understand the perspectives and try to inform you of things that we know that we, that we can tell you about. It's been great discussion. I appreciate the feedback we received. I encourage you to, to continue to be involved. If you're involved, then you make a difference. Contact me or the city staff anytime you have a question. Contact your council representative. They are there to help you. They're elected to help you to answer your questions and they do a great job of that. So I appreciate all six of my council representatives who are so attentive to the needs of our community. Keep using them. We want to be able to serve you every single day. So thanks for joining me tonight. Thanks for the opportunity for me to serve you as our mayor. Everyone be safe out there. Remember, hashtag one Longview.